So we're gonna modify the view corridor map with new pictures for that.
Yeah, so that's to the board's discretion whether or not they would waive it based on it not being visible from the view corridor. But it is, white is technically prohibited under the Ridge Preservation Code.
Why are you not matching the design of the rest of the house?
Like he said, the owner doesn't want to.
The owner asked me.
He suggested to the owner to match it and the owner said, no, we won't.
I mean, you go vertical, you got horizontal, white, beige.
And it's white here too, on this little bump out down next to the left of the front door?
That looks like it's replaced. This white to have a, so this was not white, this is a new one.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like they're gonna redo that.
To match the new color what he brings into the house. And he asked me why, he asked me that he sees some of the neighbors has white, why cannot have white?
Are the neighbors' houses fully white?
Um, you can see seventy, um, fifty-four Hudson Point is white and black. Um, eighty-one Southfield has white and gray, seventy Hudson Point is mostly white and gray.
Like it's, it's, it's a mishmash.
Yeah.
This was one of those, it was never intended to happen and it happened and then it.
Nothing we could do about it. Yeah. What's all? I didn't hear you.
Regarding the comment for the, for the overall, um, bu- building footprint on the new submission, I see we have the building footprint, so.
Oh, so I think, um, then, what I, what I was asking for is the new submission should include information on the comparison properties, the ones that you added. So, um, are you, is this the new submission?
This is the new one.
Okay. Um, were the, all of those that are listed there, the ones that he provided photos of? I don't think they were. I may have made a mistake, but.
Um, I think this is.
Sixty-nine, sixty-five, seventy-four and three.
This is the old one.
Yeah, they, they, so the ones, yeah, these are, what's in, he's got photos of.
But there were new photos, right? If you scroll down.
Yeah, but these are the new photos, I think.
I think, maybe keep scrolling, maybe, I don't know, I could be wrong.
Yeah, sixty-five.
Is there another page? Oh, okay.
This application from the, is the first one.
This is the first page?
Yes. No, th- this is the old application, go to the, to eight-five, twenty-twenty-four.
Don't mind me, my Vanna White skills are getting a little tired.
Okay, so then Natalie was correct.
So, yeah, so those homes that you've added photos of, the table should list the gross floor area and building footprint.
The old homes listed.
No, we, well, what we did is, is that if you can, okay, um, let's see what page it is. Okay, we have only four, three houses for the comparison. So if you can go up, um, one page before, oh, no.
So this is, this is, this is the comparison?
This is the comparison, this is the, this is, we have a map with, with the dimensions, seventy-four Southfield and sixty-nine and three comparison.
Yeah, and then Patterson passes out, you're at three hundred and forty-six.
I know, because they, she asked, he asked me to show the distance. So I know, this is the two comparison, and then the next page.
This one?
Okay, so this is the comparison. The other pictures was just to show that we have more neighboring houses with a white siding. It's not for the comparison. We have, i- if you want, we should look for more comparison.
Well, that's up to the board and, but ultimately, I will just say though, those dimensions I don't think are actually correct. I think the other home that is, um, if you could go back to the tax map, the, what's the one on the top?
Seventy-four and sixty-nine.
The sixty, sixty-five Hudson Point, is it?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. I don't think, I think that is also actually outside of the three hundred foot radius. Um, so, and typically the board likes to see three within the three hundred foot, but again, this is direction from the board, whatever your disposition is.
Um, when, when we're doing usually the three hundred feet, we have the, on, on, on the tax map, we're doing the, the circle then. But in the, in the development, we don't have, the, the, we, we didn't, we, we didn't was able to do it on the tax map. So we have the, the survey from the entire development. So this is from the survey from the entire development. So this is the dimensions from.
You didn't do, you didn't do a map for this one, right?
No, we can, if you'd like.
Why don't you do that?
Sure.
And give it to the, let's supply it to the applicant and then we'll.
We'll do that this week.
We'll stay consistent.
Sure.
Actually, also, I can work to, to find something in the three hundred feet, the third one, if you want to see three.
Yeah, well typically you look at three within the three hundred foot.
Three hundred foot, okay, well, Anna.
Natalie will send you over, she's got a cool way of doing it. She'll send it over to you and you can use those houses that fall within there.
Okay.
And I think we'll want to reserve the decision on white until we see.
Yeah, what's in the three hundred foot range?
View corridor, right? Public hearing? No, okay, so I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing for this application.
Second.
Questions? Favor?
Aye.
Type two, right? And I'll offer a motion to declare this a type-two action on the secret.
Second.
Question? All favor?
Aye.
Anything else on seventy-five Southfield? No, we're good here? You're, you're okay with what you gotta do here?
Yes.
Okay. Don't go anywhere. Yeah, okay, just one second, okay?
No problem.
Spoke to me if you got them.
I was, I was confused, it was just the color change on the screen, I was like, is it off white anyway? So I was like, concerned, whole color isn't changing.
Yeah, it was hard to tell with the way the rendering showed out, I don't know if it was a shadow or a.
There was something, and I was like, maybe it's just on screen, and then I put it on a different screen, and I'm like, ah.
Come on, we're, we're in the home stretch, everybody, no yawning. Were you able to sing for us? No?
Oh, it's, I'm a little cold, I mean, I'm just, no, 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 it's fine. No, no, I'm not, I'm fine.
I've been using it as a blanket, so it's nice and cozy.
This is perfect sleeping, I love, this is.
Oh, it is good sleeping with a blanket, yeah.
Have a good night, Maria.
Safe home?
What's up? Good?
Yep.
All right. Eleven Sunny Lane, I gotta make it all official. Uh, review and discuss materials submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation for a proposed addition to a single-family dwelling. Said property is located at eleven Sunny Lane in Highland Mills, is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two-one-seven, block five, lot twelve dot one. Welcome back.
Hi, um, okay, we're here for eleven Sunny Lane. Um, based, the guy wants to make an addition to his house. Um, it's an existing non-conforming lot, and we went to the ZBA and we got approved for the extension. Um, and now we're here in front of the board, um, for ARB. Um, if you have to answer any questions or concerns, does the same thing with this. We have submitted a new submission and we had to discuss the new materials, if any question. As you can see, we have learned also how to do the.
Yeah.
The three hundred feet.
And the GIS program is, the county GIS program is a little fagazy sometimes. All right, Natalie, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Um, so this application, the applicant proposes modifications and expansion of an existing single-family home. They're gonna infill the existing pool and demolish and rebuild a deck. Um, we've noted in our memo that there is extensive history on Sunny Lane for properties being converted to year-round single-family use that we have confirmed with the Building Department that this is an existing year-round single-family home, so there's no issue with that, just wanted to kind of clarify that in case anybody had questions. Um, let's see, similar to the last application, the applicant provided materials in response to our comment letter and I have reviewed them, so I'll just discuss sort of our outstanding comments on the application. Um, one is you, the applicant provided an existing conditions plan. That plan should indicate when the survey was conducted and by whom. Um, because that's really what we were looking for originally, is the survey part of it. Um, yes, the applicant did indicate that they went to the ZBA, they got several variances for bulk issues, which is kind of an amendment to our original memo, we had listed several non-compliances, but they are resolved in that issue. Uh, regarding the front yard though, the ZBA granted a variance allowing a twenty-six point six foot setback, but the plans still show a twenty-five point six foot setback.
Okay, so for that, I guess it was a typo mistake from the plan with ZBA because the existing house is by twenty-five point five, as you can see. Um, and I guess, and, and you see on the, on the measurement, on the existing, on the survey. So, and we went in front of the ZBA to extend the same line. So I guess the engineer did in the bulk table a typo mistake and he said twenty-six point six. I understand that, that we received the variance for twenty-six point six. The question is to the council, maybe, um, if, um, if, if we can do something about that.
Kelly may need to look at the plans that were reviewed by the ZBA to confirm that that was a discrepancy in the decision essentially. Yeah, so we'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
Sorry, Kelly, I speak for you. Yeah. Uh, so the applicant provided information on three comparison homes for you to consider the similarity and dissimilarity criteria of your code. Um, a portion of the property line for two oh five Bakertown is within the three hundred foot radius, but the home itself is not. So the board should consider whether or not that's acceptable and if information on other homes near to the property would be helpful. Um, the applicant should list the colors and materials of the proposed deck on the ARB form. Photos were submitted demonstrating the visibility of the home from and to the view corridor. The planning board should consider if that information is acceptable for you to make a decision under your code requirements for Ridge Preservation. The applicant provided a photo of the existing home. The renderings show a white home with black roof. Per the code, white is not permitted except as authorized by the planning board, where the originally approved structure is constructed of non-natural materials and the addition is substantially less in mass and/or appearance, or otherwise if it's not visible from the view corridor, you can make it, waive that. Um, the code requires roof slopes follow the natural contour of the land where possible, so you may wish to consider if the applicant's proposal is satisfactory. Uh, the applicant confirmed in their response letter that no trees will be removed. We recommend that be included as a note on the plan, that's for Mr. Gelb. Um, the applicant proposes to abandon the existing septic system and replace it with new. We have not removed, reviewed that information submitted since it's not pertinent to the ARB review. However, we recommend that your action require the applicant perform testing witnessed by the building inspector and submit necessary information supporting the design of the septic system to the satisfaction of the building inspector prior to building permit. And then otherwise, the board should consider whether or not a public hearing should be scheduled or waived as permitted by your code and we defer to counsel on seeker recommendations. Do you have any questions?
I know, just the board. I think this one requires a field trip though.
Do we have a picture of existing and proposed? That's the existing.
That's existing. And that's.
That's the proposed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think the board should probably take a field trip and then look at, using the three hundred foot.
I was gonna say.
Radius, take a look at Sunny Lane.
He needs to submit the three hundred foot radius houses.
No, he, he does, but he needs to put the houses on, because Bakertown has a lot of big homes on.
Big homes, they're not the three hundred foot.
So we have.
I think you have two on Sunny Lane, or one on Sunny Lane across the street. That's big.
On Sunny Lane?
Yeah. No.
I don't know, I get, um, we have the. Take the address.
So you have one ninety-five, two oh one and two oh five, and.
One ninety-five and two on, two oh, and two oh five. So two oh five is the question.
Two oh five's out.
Out?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we, we could do, get the chains out, right?
They're, they're next to the wild cherry tree, um, and it needs some bouncing.
No, but I'm saying though, with, with two oh five being the structure, the, the back of the property is in, but the structure is out of the three hundred foot circle.
Right.
That's discretionary, I think, to the planning board, whether or not you would allow it. I think really what you're looking for though is how does the home look compared to the home within the three hundred feet? So to me, my opinion is that it would be out too. That's up to you guys.
No.
A lot of opinions tonight from me, so.
Hey, well, while, while you guys are thinking about that, I pulled up the ZBA decision. I was concerned I had a typo, I, I won't lie to you, I was concerned I had a typo. Um, it actually came from the zoning table that the applicant provided to the ZBA. They said that they were proposing a twenty-six point six foot setback, so I'm gonna think about how that's gonna need to be dealt with, and I'll have to get back to you. So good news is I didn't have a typo, but there was.
No, I told, I, well, I mentioned that my engineer.
Oh, I.
Yes, not you did a typo.
I, I get, I.
No, no, no. My engineer, and I have the bulk table. My engineer asked for, with the type in the bulk table twenty-six point five, instead of on the map, it says twenty-five point five.
Got it.
So the map is the reality and his table was wrong.
Okay, good. Um, so I will consider how best to approach that and I'll let the board know and I'll let the applicant know.
Okay. Other feedback, I, other feedback from the board on this project right now, I mean, I have to go take a look.
I'd tell they take a look too, um, but white's concerning.
Yeah, it's a lot of white.
The white, but is the same as the house is now.
Yeah, but look at the house, come on.
But you're going much higher up.
Come on. Look at, look at the house now and look, look at the, look at the proposed house.
I mean, a- as a general guideline for the board, the house now is almost hidden. We have, we have a three hundred foot radius, you have a couple, and he's old in the neighborhood. Couple of small houses, we okay a bigger house here. And then it just keeps flowing down, you understand what I'm trying to say?
I understand what you're trying to say.
Like, where does it stop?
Well, that's what I'm saying though, that's why I'm recommending to the board, go drive through the neighborhood, look at the entire three hundred foot boundary and see how it develops into the, into the neighborhood. I also want to go and actually take a look at the landscaping, because these don't actually look like real trees, these look like scrub. Like, like either bushes or.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Like some seeds, I don't, so I don't know if that's gonna be.
Overgrowth.
Real side, you know, real screening year-round.
But if we are out from the view corridor, but if we run, run scene from the view corridor, if we can be, um, waived from the Ridge Preservation, then the white, um, maybe not.
The board's option to waive it based on how they feel and then screening, also screening, so we, we gotta look. I, I can't give you an answer until.
So, so to do, add some bushes in the front will help?
I think you'll probably need to see it when you're out there. And then, but, but know that the applicant's thinking maybe bushes might help, keep that in the back of your minds. When you're looking.
It is, again, it's not out of the, let's say it's not out of the realm of possibilities. But I think it's gonna be better once the board takes a ride down there and peek at everything going on down there. Pictures are great, but sometimes getting on the ground and, I'm not familiar, I don't go down there at all, so I'm not. My head isn't around everything that's down there. Um, other than secret, right?
Uh, secret and then you're gonna wait on the public hearing.
We're gonna wait on the public hearing, so type two, right Kelly?
Type two.
All right, so I'll offer a motion to type, this is type two on the secret.
Second.
Questions? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so you have to, you have to do another submission anyway, use this stuff.
Yeah, alright.
So in between then and now, I just ask the board, on your own time, so we don't, it doesn't come, turn into a meeting, just take a ride down there and look, look at the neighborhood please. Questions on Sunny Lane or?
Um, also if you're gonna waive the public hearing or?
I think we're gonna wait until.
The next submission, okay.
But that won't hold, we can wait that the next time you're in front of us, it's not either here nor there.
Okay, so I'm fine.
All right, so eleven Sunny Lane, so now we're gonna go to two Country Hollow. Review and discuss materials submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation for demo reconstruction of a single-family dwelling. Said property is located at two Country Hollow and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two-four-seven, block five, lot fifteen. Welcome back.
Hi, my name is Shilai Miguel from Arpen Design. Um, to propose a new, a new single-family house on two Country Hollow. Um, so as you can see, we have the, the site plan here.
So I just try to pull the plans up.
Um, and. And the rooms, um, we, stays the same as the old home, um, so no increase in water. Um, and the comparison for this house, um, we understand that it's, all the comparisons are of the three hundred feet radius. Um, we will ask to consider that this house is the, by the corner of the development from Country Hollow and on Skunimunk is all the houses more apart one of each other. So we have shown from the surrounding area more than three hundred feet, um, bigger houses. So we'll ask the board to loo- look on that. Um, if you can, if, if we can come, um, to the size.
You could probably take sixteen Country Hollow off your comparison, being the board just denied that application tonight, so.
They denied it?
Yes.
He's like, X, okay, we won't.
So, this is two, so this is, yeah.
This is the house?
That's the house as proposed, right?
As proposed, yes.
I got all kinds of questions on this.
You want us, go ahead, so I didn't hear you CJ.
Um, yeah, I'm, the back rendering, what is that? Uh, I, I can't even.
Looks like typo.
It, it looked, it looks like there's like eight hundred floor-to-ceiling windows in the back. The, go out to, go to a render, I don't understand what that, that.
So the back is basically the upper two floors, I can go to the screen to show for you.
That looks like three stories, that looks like basements first and second, it's all windows.
Yeah, this two floors is a, is a two-story family room. And this is the basement and the designer did the same type of windows to have this look.
Yeah, the, I mean, you want to talk about dissimilar, I mean, with the, with the rounding and the floor-to-ceiling, I mean, this is very unique architecture, I'll put it that way.
Yes, it, okay. Hold on. Natalie, just, let's just do yours and then we'll.
Sure, yep. Um, okay, so they are gonna demolish the existing home, reconstruct a three-story, three-bedroom home with a large unfinished basement. Um, exterior improvements include relocating the existing driveway, replacement of water and sewer services, drainage improvements, porch and decking. A bulk table should be added to the plan confirming compliance with the zoning requirements. Uh, we've noted that the lot was approved as part of a plat that was signed in nineteen ninety-eight and at the time, the lot was approved with zero point nine-two, two-three acres, which is less than what the current zoning requires. And we're asking Kelly to confirm whether or not that would be considered then a legally pre-existing non-conforming condition. Um, on another note, the nineteen ninety-eight signed plat indicates that the front yard setback from Skunimunk Road was required to be fifty feet, where current zoning requires forty feet. Uh, so we recommend you discuss with Kelly or get an opinion from the building inspector whether or not the forty or fifty foot setback should apply. Um, the material and color of the proposed deck should be noted on the plans and listed on the ARB form. The county website indicates that the home, the existing home is eighteen seventy-three square feet, it's one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three square feet, but the proposed home is nine thousand five hundred and nine square feet and is approximately five times greater. Um, the applicant, again, I was a little confused, Mr. Gelb, when you were describing why you didn't include comparison properties within the three hundred feet, but our memo notes that the six homes that were provided are all outside of that range. Um, but in any event, um, this home with all of the homes that you did provide is still larger by twenty to sixty-one percent. Um, so that's something for the board to consider similarity and dissimilarity wise. Um, regarding Ridge Preservation, the applicant provided a photo from the Route forty-four view corridor. The photo, the photo demonstrates that the home is not visible in a leaf-off condition. We recommend you consider if that's sufficient for you to make a determination on Ridge Preservation and if not, request additional information of the applicant. The code requires the use of earth tone neutral colors that blend into the natural environment. We recommend you consider the rendering and material samples provided and determine if the proposal meets the intent of the code. Uh, the code requires the preservation of healthy trees except where essential to the location of the structure. It seems like there were some healthy, large trees in the vicinity of the existing home, so it's not clear whether or not those are proposed for removal to construct the new home. We've recommended that a tree survey within that area be provided, um, for the board to consider. There is a regulated stream under the water quality protection overlay that crosses the rear of the applicant's property. The applicant should show the boundary of the water edge and the fifty-foot and hundred-foot riparian buffers on the plan to determine if there are any impacts that the board needs to consider under the code. Uh, additional information is required for complete projected water and sewer demand form. A copy of the easement on the property should be provided to council for review and a public hearing should be scheduled or waived as permitted by code. And as always, we defer to counsel on seeker recommendations. And that's all I have unless the board has any questions.
And just one question, the, the home is gonna be five times larger than the current home, but there's, they're claiming there's gonna be zero additional water use?
It's only a three-bedroom, apparently.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll pull the code. I would like to see the three hu- homes in the three hundred foot.
Yeah. I, I applaud your work on picking homes that match, but they're not even close, well, they're not even like close within the ba- the boundary.
Before we go any further.
Yeah.
So.
I, I, I think you're getting some good general feedback rate that the house is strikingly dissimilar to the neighborhood. I mean, Country Hollow I'm fairly familiar with, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a big house.
I understand, um, what I'm trying to explain, that sixteen Country Hollow is inside of the community from, which all, all houses is smaller. This is by the edge.
Yeah, it's on the corner, it's a corner, it's the corner lot.
The corner lot.
Yeah.
So since it's, it's in the corner lot, if, if made to consider that should not be, it should be able to be a little bit bigger, um, to be bigger, not little bit, a bit bigger.
I, I get shooting for the stars, but I mean, let's be real.
You can't even keep a straight face with this one.
I, he wants to be, to be bigger and the argument is that since it's not inside of the community, he should, he, he wants to go bigger.
And I applaud, and I applaud him for wanting to go bigger, but I, you, you've worked with this board enough. I think trying to sell the board on a house that's nine thousand square feet in a, in a community that's four thousand square feet, most of the homes, some of them are even, some of them are even smaller there.
I was gonna say if that.
I mean, we get going bigger, but don't you think maybe it's a little, a little too big, even though it's on a quarter lot?
And also, um, it's not in the view corridor, but when you make it that tall, because if, the existing home might not be in the view corridor, but if you bump it up and make it taller, does that bring it into the view corridor?
Um, I think that from the view corridor, we don't see, we don't see the, this, this lot at all, I can check it again.
I, I mean, let's not even talk about the size, let's talk about the overall design as well.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's, it's not like you, there was any thought of kept keeping anything that's left in that development up there. I mean, it's.
Too dissimilar.
Yeah, there's the word. I, listen, you, you're, you're client, can, you can continue to push the forward applic- application forward and bring, bring in the comparisons with the three hundred foot radius. I don't, I don't know if that's gonna actually help you here, that may actually make things a little worse for you. It's, because I, I remember, because we were just up there for sixteen Country Hollow, so I think everybody's got a fairly good idea what that neighborhood looks like.
What was the, do you remember proposed size of sixteen?
Uh, it was fifteen hun- uh, I don't know, we, it's denied, so.
Yeah, no, not, not by the three hundred, just.
Oh, you mean like the pri- the previously approved?
The one before the one.
Yeah. Cause I'm sure it's nowhere near what this is.
So with the building footprint, we are not too much more, we ju- this was three, um, thirty-three nineteen, we are thirty-eight twenty. But the total square footage, including the basement, we are more than that. More than that now.
Just a little bit.
From 6638 to 9505. So if I can bring down the house to a certain number, which, how, how much percent above the surrounding houses? Again, I, I can, I will, I will try to bring it down to 8,000. And the footprint should not exceed more than 3,000.
I mean, if you're even at 8,000, I mean, even if you look at your own comparison table when you pull, when we're not even looking at 300 foot, look at your own comparison table. You're still above, I mean.
So the building footprint, we have one of the table that is 4,073.
Right, but I'm, footprint, well, I'm looking at two things, the total footprint and the total square.
Total square.
Yes, your footprint may be similar in size, but what you lack in footprint, you made up for in mass.
Because we have a big room, two-story high. So that, that makes the, the, the more the calculation, so.
I think you need to do a lot of pencil sharpening here. I can't give you a number, because I think we're gonna have to see what it looks like. I, I think you really gotta put the pencil in the sharpener though and, and bring the tip down on a little bit.
Okay, we're gonna work on the square footage and also on the front design.
And I think what you should do would be beneficial for this board is normally you just do like one or two, if you can do the four, the renderings of the four sides.
Sides.
So we, the board can get a better idea of what it's gonna look like, especially if you're gonna keep the, the three-story. I know what you said, it's two-story, but, because you got the basement, the three-story glass. So the board can get a better idea of what that's gonna look like. I think that'd be very helpful with this board's decision.
Okay, so we're gonna come back with this, with the revised application. And we'll see you next time.
Hey, we will see you next, I don't think we gotta do anything else. Yeah, it doesn't really, it doesn't go anywhere. Alright, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. Last, but certainly not least, remember, I don't do agendas in any particular order. Ridge Road 3 Lot Subdivision, review and discuss materials submitted for a proposed site plan, ARB and Ridge Preservation for, for a 3 Lot subdivision. Said property is located in 345 Ridge Road and is known as Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 204 Block 1 Lot 14.2. Good evening.
Good evening, Joel Mann, Rahaman Associates. We're here for, on behalf of the applicant. The proposed 3 Lot subdivision goes back a history. We started this application, I didn't check the date, probably we were here in 2018 or 19. And we want to appoint, just, we started to finalize the design of the homes. Got stuck with that with the owners. Then we realized now when we wanna come back to the board that we have to reapply, so we did that. We put in a new application. But technically continuing the same proposal at that time. I think at that time, we formed out the lot sizes, the lot lines, the placement of the houses. It's proposed three, single-family homes with pools, areas on every lot. I received the comments from the engineering comments. It's quite, it's quite a lot of comments that we need to address, I understand that. And I think it's still, I, I'm not sure if, if you wanna go through everything, read it through, but I, everything is, a lot of technical comments that we can address and we will address. And with that, I believe, I'll hand it over to the board if, if there is any significant concerns. We will work to address that. And we'll come back with a, with an updated submission.
Do you wanna go through everything Natalie, or you wanna just hit the high notes or?
Yeah, well, you know what, I always, I always parse my memos to try to hit the high notes, but for this one, there's still three, like three pages. So I'll just try to, you know, go through.
We don't need to read all three pages.
I know, I know, I know. Well, one thing I did wanna just remind the board, and you know, Mr. Mann described that this application was considered in 2019. During that time, the applicant proposed a shared driveway for two of the lots. The board weighed in on that and did not favor that. So now the applicant is here with the three driveways. The changes from that submission, the placement of the homes on the lots are slightly shifted and also the configuration, they're larger. And they've seemed to have pretty much a set footprint now where perhaps the architectural renderings would be submitted in a future, or provided in a future submission. We would like to see a demolition plan. There are several existing wells that should be abandoned in accordance with DOH and AWWA requirements. That should be a condition of your action if you move to approve or approve it. Let's see, what really is helpful here? The property is not within the water and sewer area boundaries. I know during the 2019 discussion, the code does require a village board waiver for properties that are within that boundary if they're not proposing to connect to municipal water and sewer. But since they're not in the boundary, I think that that issue is resolved.
Yes, that, that was one of the issues that we got stuck and we hanged around, so.
Yep, so I think that's good to go unless Kelly has any other questions on that. Yeah, you know what? A SWIP will be provided. You know, we had some comments on the drainage and the culverts that are proposed.
There's some discrepancies that we need to clear out, happened with the changes, so.
Sure, yeah, exactly, with the erosion and sediment control, I'm sure that's what you're talking about. One of the things that the board will need to consider with respect to landscaping is the code requires shade trees per foot of road frontage. Our memo notes that the road front, the road along the right-of-way only includes the driveway construction and wetland mitigation areas. So accordingly, the board may wish to waive that requirement as unnecessary or possibly move the landscaping further into the lots. That's something to kinda keep in the back of your mind. The code requires or encourages trees greater than one foot diameter be preserved. Preliminary plat requirements state that trees of this size should be located on the lot and shown on the plan. We recommend that the applicant provide that information for you to consider where trees may be preserved or replaced. We defer to fill on comments regarding site distances for the driveways, but we note that the development will require approval from the Orange County Department of Public Works for the driveway opening on the county road. A substantial comment, it has to do with the wetlands, obviously, that extend the frontage of the property. A new delineation will be required because the last one was performed in 2018 and typically they're accepted up to five years.
I've already scheduled that, so.
Good. With that being said, a freshwater wetlands permit will be required from the village. The disturbances are primarily associated with the driveway construction. And at, they're proposing essentially to mitigate this by constructing wetlands adjacent to where there is existing. And the board may wish to consider engaging a freshwater wetlands specialist, which you've done recently, actually, yeah, so.
Senior housing.
Yep, so that would be appropriate, I think, for this application.
It's a pretty small area, but it's up to you.
Yep, it's up to the board. And then a water quality protection overlay that also may impact this application as the water body to the north is regulated under the code, so those areas should be shown on the plan. And, you know, I don't think I need to say anymore unless you want me to.
No, I, I do remember the conversation though, because it was originally like a family that was gonna divide these three lots, that's why it was a shared driveway.
Yeah, there was.
Cause he didn't want them making the cuts through all the, that was, it was the toss-up of three separate cuts for the water, through the wetlands or the one cut for the wetland and then the driveway.
Splits, yeah.
Bifurcating further up the road. I remember, if I remember correctly, that's why those little bumps.
I was just gonna ask, what are those bump outs on that one driveway?
I'm, this is what I've, because the concern was if someone was coming one way and someone was coming the other way, where, where were the cars were gonna go?
Right.
But that was back, I think, originally when.
Or it was a, a shared driveway.
It was a shared driveway, because we didn't want them going through the wetlands, because this is.
Hey, that's probably still there for the fire department.
Is it?
I've had that on really long driveways where fire departments like to pull out in case somebody's like, we gotta go leave. And they're like, dude, I'm coming down the driveway.
It's always good for really long driveways.
See what they wanna do. Because, and then like with the landscaping too, if I remember correctly, this is still wooded area in the front of Ridge.
Yeah, it's all, it's completely all wooded, actually, yeah.
Don't want that disturbed.
We didn't want any of that disturbed. So we didn't want them putting, we, if I remember correctly, leaving the original landscaping was better than trying to put stuff in there.
So Natalie, what, what shade trees were you talking about then? That's still all wooded along the roadway there.
Well, what I was saying is the code requires a certain number of shade trees along the frontage. But in this case, what I was saying is it's probably not applicable because of the existing wooded areas.
As long as it's not disturbed, removed, then we're.
There's an existing swale with, we want, I think it's the benefit, it's to leave it natural.
Yeah, yep.
What you could do, if you could waive it altogether, because it's a minor subdivision under your code, or you can move the landscaping into the plan if it's, if it's appropriate, essentially. That's up to you.
Right now, there's not much else to go on. We start seeing some renderings, I would think.
Well, there's some technical details he's gotta work on as far as.
One of them being that part of this is also in your role in the Environmental Conservation Commission. And as I said on the prior application that was also subject to it, it's, there's something that has to be done prior to the issuance of a building permit, but from a practical standpoint, it makes sense to do it now. Where they should identify some trees, I'm not saying a full tree survey, but basically you would identify if there's any in there that you want to save. You should do that. And I just had two short things. And one was that we also need for the planning board file, the entity disclosure form from 345 Ridge Realty LLC. And then there was a sidewalk detail. And I didn't know if a sidewalk was proposed or if that was just an error on the plan.
Maybe it's just a left-out detail that was.
I don't think, Ridge doesn't have a sidewalk on it, so why, it would make no sense.
Probably remaining from a.
That's what I thought.
Detail sheets typically, but engineering firms, it's.
Someone copied and pasted over from another plan.
Exactly.
That's, because I didn't see one along the front, I just didn't want to have missed it and then have to talk to Rob about maintenance and things like that.
I think as far as the ECC, the environmental, I think the board would probably wanna see in the, within the footprint of the home, if there's any large caliber trees that are gonna be removed for the, because the footprints are probably where, this is where the houses are gonna be, right?
Yes, yeah.
So we'd be looking, we're not gonna ask you to map every tree on the property. So just where the driveways are gonna be and the footprints of the, of the homes.
And the construction.
Well, yeah, we're already on the trees that they plan to take it down.
Well, no, no, but as we're saying, we would limit to.
Limit the disturbance.
Limit the disturbance, and then we would say like in here, this is the limits of disturbance. Is there a, a 12-foot round 200-year red oak?
They won't be able to do anything outside of that disturbance.
If there's like a 200-year-old red oak in that, move, move the, let's see if we can move the house to the driveway.
Right.
Or they might be able to like snake a driveway around some.
I need to, I need to check, it might be that we did locate it. I remember locating all the trees, so I don't know why it's not in this.
It had been talked about back in 18 and 19 when this application was initially here, so maybe someone did the legwork for you already?
Yeah, I, I remember doing that, so I think I did it on the whole property.
Okay.
So I think there are clearing, or disturbance limits shown on the plan, so it would be the tree survey within them essentially, I think, right?
Yeah, and within that limit, we're not, we're not making you do the whole.
So, so you need it like on the map and list it in a table or on the map is enough?
It's on the map, right?
The map.
Yeah, typically you can just show them on the map and put an indication on the size and the type and then the board can consider whether or not they.
I mean, if you wanna take a picture with each tree, with a little sign, you can do.
I will come back in six months. And then, you wanna, at the meeting, you wanna go over every picture, so.
We would wanna go over a picture, right? And we need you to geolocate and timestamp every picture to make sure they came from the property too. Sorry, we're getting touched.
Okay.
Alright, anything Natalie, Kelly, whoever you are tonight? Okay, so I'll offer a motion to type, this is an unlisted action on the Seagra and declares a tent as served as.
I will second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for us, Mr. Mann?
I also just wanted to note.
No, 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 no.
That you did, you referred that to the county for 239 referral, you got it back. It was a local determination, but they had seven advisory comments. I just wanted, you know, the board to take a look at it and I don't know if you got a copy, if not.
I got a copy and I looked at it. It's the stuff that.
And, and most of it was actually.
We, we, we will take it and all the stuff. It's like recommended stuff that we will anyway take care of.
Yeah, nothing seemed too outlandish that the county came back.
No, yeah.
Okay.
Same thing, DPW, so they're waiting for the SWIP, I have to give a hard look on that, so.
I think that's all we got for you then. Alright, we'll see you when you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, hopefully now we'll not come back in five years from now, like last time, so. Thank you very.
Have a good night, sir.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the board, I'll offer a motion to close.
A second.
Questions? No one ever questions that motion. All in favor?
Aye. I'll give you a double hand on that one.